In lieu of something more far-reaching, which is not yet really on the horizon. So, that's kind of where I stand.
Craig?
It seems to me that we have a lot of people concentrated in a small, too small of an area. If you look around, we have a large number of parks besides Arches. We've got Canyonlands, we've got state parks, we've got some other facilities. I don't know if there's a way to capture that data or not.
There probably is, but anecdotally it seems to us that visitors will visit Arches for part of the day and then they'll go up to Island in the Sky District of Canyonlands. Now, that doesn't mean all of them, but quite a few.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know if they, if they understand that these other places are there, or they just come to go to Arches.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's all of us because the visitation to Canyonland is, is rising too very quickly. The visitation to Dead Horse Point is also, I think the visitation on BLM lands, which you can clearly see when you go past the camping areas, is also just through the roof.
Yeah.
And they're starting to really, everybody's starting to really feel the pinch here. And I think we have to worry about the overall visitor experience that we as a park and we as a community provide.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it would be nice if we could figure a way so that when people come here, they know to go to Arches at a certain time, then they know to go to Canyonlands at a certain time, they, they have an option to go to Dead Horse Point at a certain time. And to spread that around to try to reduce the congestion.
That's an argument for the reservation system that you just made.
Sorry?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that is an argument for the reservation system because I think that people tend to use their time to do other events and other things. For example, I mean, if, if I were to think about getting a reservation to go into Arches at 10 o'clock and I signed up six months ahead and got it, what would I do between eight and six? Well, I'd go eat out, maybe have breakfast, and then I'd, you know, tinker around the town and look and probably buy a few things. You know, it's, it's, from an economic standpoint, I see the reservation system as being at least or possibly more fruitful to retail businesses because it actually keeps people in town and gives them time to actually stroll around and do things while they're waiting to go where they're going. Or if you have a reservation at 2:00, sure, you might skip out to Dead Horse Point or to Grand Viewpoint and then go back to Arches. But I see it as, as an excellent solution on an interim basis, especially to, to help add quality of experience to, for the, for the visitor here, which is really what it's all about. And overcrowding is not fun for any of us. It simply isn't. So, you know, for that reason, I, I'm for actually implementing a reservation system on an interim basis to, to see if we can control the influx enough to make it palatable for people to have a quality experience in the park. And at the same time, you know, if we can get funding for long-term planning and find some other solutions, which may include, you know, an exit road out of, out of Arches or whatever, you know, the park can come up with, then I would be certainly amenable to that.
I also, it's not lost on me, since I live here, that Arches isn't the only place with a crowding problem.
Samuel.
And I wonder if there isn't some value in the city, in the county, and the parks, if you wish to get together and try to come up with a collective solution instead of separate ones?
Yeah.
Now, in the interim, I really have to do something. We can't keep pouring that many people into the park. But in a longer term, I think it would be great to have a unified idea and a plan.
UDOT's going to take care of it for us.
Oh, hey, thanks.
191 reservations? I like it.
That works for me.
Shuttle.
You know, I did, I did mention that we had looked at a voluntary shuttle before. We've taken a quick look at a mandatory shuttle. They seem, both seem out of our reach. We have looked at, at a second entrance to Arches, which is kind of an interesting idea. You know, we have the Salt Valley Road and we have the Willow Springs Road. While we would, we have some planning issues with that because we have a management plan that doesn't envision developing those areas. But if we were to choose to do it, it's important to note that we just, we have what's called a Class III, a Class C estimate on these road costs in order to improve those roads. And Salt Valley is 19 and a half miles long. Half of that is on the county and SITLA. Well, it's all on the county, some of it also SITLA. And our estimate is that to improve that road as a second park entrance would cost $48 million. So then we went and looked at the Willow Springs Road, and it's eight miles, about half and half, and that would cost 35, mostly because of the real difficulty of some, some of the terrain in there. And that's before you put an entrance station or anything like that in. So, you know, it's, it's adverse to current planning, which of course we could replan, but it's also extraordinarily expensive, and in each case, only half of it is on our jurisdiction. So I, I don't think that I can just go to the county and say, "Okay, where's your half of this money?" And, you know, the bigger problem with all that about the two entrance roads, additional entrance road though, is that it doesn't solve our problem because our roads really aren't too crowded in Arches. The roads are okay. The parking lots are packed to the max. And I don't think that a second entrance would fix that. It would simply be another way to put more people into the same overcrowded place.
Do you, do you need anything from us to implement this interim plan?
Support.
And how would you like to see that support, besides us patting each other on the back?
Do you want to address that one?
Well, you know, the way I'm proceeding is, and then again, still, so I have some disagreements with Kate as far as a northern entrance, both in cost and how that would help mitigate some of the issues like the entrance. So, you know, when they have to blow the line when the cars are backed up to the highway, that's a lot of lost revenue.
Yeah.
So, it, a matter of, you know, the congestion in the parking spaces is a, is a different animal. But I bring that, that, that point of disagreement in that it's really important to me, I have, we probably have, all have our own opinions about what this interim plan should look like. I have my opinions about that, and I plan to surface those soon in my discussions with Kate to the county council, whether that's in the form of a letter or a resolution, you know, and I'm happy to work with people on that. As far as just signing off saying, you know, "The timed entry system as proposed is fine" and send that up the chain, I'm not interested in that personally. And so, you know, the way I'm proceeding is continuing to work with Kate, ask questions, look at their plans, and kind of bounce ideas back and forth. And I'm always open to work with other folks on that as I move forward in that work, so.
And I should, let me point out that the Salt Valley Road and the Willow Springs Road are currently open and accessible. Willow Springs is pretty rugged in some places. The Salt Valley Road is maintained by the county and by us, each our half. So those estimates of cost are to improve it as a paved road that is similar to our entrance road.
Yeah, you know, I did drive that Willow Springs Road, you know, doing research for this conversation, and it was quite enjoyable. And so I would hate to lose that as a park experience as well, so.
So the Willow Springs Road is 16 miles or eight?
Eight.
It's only eight? I don't want it to say only eight, but it's only eight miles?
Yes. But it's, I think it is.
He's got a bird to do that. And we, what do we figure? It's like around $2 million a mile is?
There's a lot of rock on that road. It's not just a...
Do you have an, do you have an idea, sir?
Not without...
You want a road?
Like these beings, if you have a lot of rock, it changes a lot, blasting, it's difficult.
And it's rock and it's...
$2 million is, or reasonably easy construction, $2 million is not a bad, not a bad estimate.
And I think, Curtis?
Yes.
If I can interject, I'm not objecting to your, the idea that you've expressed for me, to me about Salt Valley Road. I think that's something that we should still look at.
And I'm not, at this point, it's like advocating that we pave it, but if we're talking about, we're running an analysis on what can happen on a short-term basis, that entrance already exists. It's a good road.
It is a good road.
And so, you know, it should be considered on an interim basis, you know, assuming that it, it helps and mitigate the problem. I think, I think what I'm trying to say is, if a, if a resolution shows up and we still have, we don't have a lot of buy-in, and these resolutions pass the county council four to three or five to two, they're just not going to hold the weight that's needed for the members of delegation to say, "Okay, they're on the same page." So that's what I'm saying is there needs, you know, I know how I feel about it, I'm working on it, I plan to share that with the county council as soon as possible. I'm not opposed to collaborating. But the process to get buy-in is really important from everyone, so that whatever that instrument is, if it's a letter or it's a resolution, that the members of the delegation are hearing good things from everyone so that they feel comfortable and, you know, advocating to the secretary's office that let the locals drive the process.
Kate, do you have any idea how many people enter and/or exit on Salt Valley and Willow Springs Road now?
I don't have it in my head, but quite a few do, and I think it's a growing number. And we do keep the road in pretty good shape in the park, and I think the county keeps it in pretty good shape outside. So it's open, it is popular, there are a lot of people who just come in there, but I can pull numbers from traffic counters, which sometimes work, and I get those, get those to you guys.
Okay. But Kate, are you receiving entrance fees for those people coming in on those two roads?
Probably not.
So what we are saying is that we support this road to be used, knowing that it's not going to be generating revenue. And that's like going to a business and saying, "Open your back door and let people come in back. And by the way, good luck, you know, with, with like capturing the revenue from that." I mean, that's, it's kind of a complicated ask. I mean, you've got your management plan, you don't have a booth there. It's complicated for us to just say, "Oh, there's a second road." Well, it's not managed in that way. I, I think that if we wanted to support as councils, a private-public partnership, maybe we need to be looking at current business in Moab that could, that does have the infrastructure within their business or the capacity to run a bus into Arches. So if Kate is saying that a business can get a CUA, doesn't have to participate in the reservation system, and the bus can come right up and come right through and take people into Arches, I mean, I'm looking at Rory thinking like, "What would it take for your business to buy a bus and take people into Arches?" Or other businesses, I mean, you're a people-moving business in Moab, you know what I mean?
You already do it.
And you already do it. So like, maybe we need to be looking at incentives for that action as well, as opposed to just continuing to put on the park service solving the problem.
If that's a component of an interim plan and a long-term plan, I think that's great. And there's no one saying that we can't put a booth on the north entrance either, right? So, so this is all part of the process to shake this out.
I think you almost have to put a booth on the north entrance if you had a reservation system. So part of the dialogue when the reservation system was first, proposal was first rolled out, was that the community really wanted a long phase in the education period. That's a significant change, and that was, that was going to create waves and learn to minimize those waves. And so, to support the park service in being able to implement what appears to be the most viable interim solution and to create these waves, I would like to support them soon so that they can move forward, hopefully, in time for next spring. Because next spring is now moving to be barely a year, less than a year away until next March, when the next big shocking wave hits. So I'm hoping that it is much in redo interim planning that it doesn't take more than a couple of months for us to do that and craft a letter to our congressional delegation saying whatever we want to say. I would hope it's supporting the park and managing the congestion by this right issue.
And I, I think it's essential that we give a good, long time for the word to get out. We'd have to use the Utah Office of Tourism, who are excellent at getting the word out. We'd like to use the Moab Travel Council also to get the word out, and lots of other ways that are, that are typical, so that people, what we don't want is to have people surprised or, or upset. We want them to be able to use this to plan their trip ahead of time or to be spontaneous and try and get a reservation the day of or the day after. Well, we want to make sure those things are feasible.
Mr. Chair, may I add?
Please.
So Elaine Gisler, our travel council director, was on vacation, but she sent me an email having to do with the need for advance notice. If I, if I could just take a moment and read. Any reservation plans for Arches must provide the travel council and Utah Office of Tourism with a minimum of 18 months to communicate the procedure to all the tour operators, the travel agents around the world. She said, she's also asked that we have the information translated into foreign languages since individuals will be making their own reservations, if it goes that way. The tour operators work one year in advance for their printed materials, so it's important for us to provide the details early. And then she had a question. In confirming the fee to book a reservation, if that's canceled, does the person receive a refund? So that's what I got.
Sure. Yeah.
I don't remember the answer to that, but I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I think we've always committed to a year advance, 18 months is more. I should point out that commercial operators might not be subject to the reservation system. They would need a commercial use authorization. So I don't know that that would be a huge problem. It might be most important to get the word out to the commercial operators.
I was just going to say, that's exactly what I was just going to say just a minute ago, is just what Ruth just said. We're already getting bookings for 2020. So, it's, I mean, and also 221. So, I mean, it's...
Oh, so you take reservations?
A lot of the bus groups are, are really concerned because they've already put in their brochures what they're charging these folks, and then by the time they get there, then they're going to end up with an added, with an added fee. So that's what a lot of them are concerned about.
They're, what's the added fee they're concerned about?
Well, they're concerned that the bus groups, when you were talking about coming in, is it going to be, the company has to pay the $300 for the CWA, right?
That is new. That's new for all of those tour buses.
And then you're going to pay for every person that's on that bus, right? $15, right? That's the part that they're...
I can see why. That's a big jump.
Not adding on, so that's a big...
I didn't do it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but frankly, Arches only gets an average of six tour buses a day. That's really not very many in the, in the world of national parks.
So a commercial bus will pay $300 plus $15 per person on the bus?
300 annually. 300 annually.
Oh, okay. So $15 a person.
Yeah.
Did they not pay before?
They pay the, what is it, the $100, is that what they pay? Per coach?
Where they'd come in after hours or before. Yeah, it's been a...
Is that, is that a national change?
It's a national change.
So Rory, your company has a CUA?
We have a, what is it, CWA?
CUA, yeah.
The CUA, yeah.
He's one of the 250.
The hard part is for that is I have to have a guide for every 15 persons on that coach. So if I go on a step on, what's what we call a step on, is I get on the coach and I go into Arches and I talk about Arches and, you know, the problem is, is I have to have another person on that bus for every 15 person. So it makes it really tough for me to find another guide, certified, to ride on that coach with me, because most of them have anywhere up to 50 people.
Do you remember why we had to start that?
Yes, and, yeah. And I wish we could have got people more like...
You know, we can always talk, we can always talk about it more later.
Yeah.
And then that was...
Because I think when, when I go out there as a guide, I really stress safety and staying on the trails and not abusing the area, which is...
Thank you.
Yeah. Now we're all...
It is the people that don't...
I don't know if this has a deal with congestion.
So anyways, well, it does with the coaches, so.
Sure, sure. But we don't...
So are we playing political logistics in calling it a timed entry system now or not a reservation system? Or are they two in the same?
I started out by calling it a timed entry system, and then people said, "Just call it what it is, it's a reservation system." So I did that, and now maybe we're going back. I don't, I think either way works. It may be that one is more, makes more sense to people than the other, but I'm not stuck on either one.
All right. We do have other agenda items, so a couple of quick thoughts. Michael?
Please. Can I say something really quick before he does? One thing I was thinking is, what if we could put a lane in for those people that have done the reservation system first and try that?
Well, if we had a reservation in, system in place, it's improbable that they'd face a long line.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we could get them around somehow.
Between Bloody Mary Wash and our...
And then we'd kind of force people to be like, "Well, we should have made a reservation," you know?
Oh, yeah, because then they could just breeze in.
It's just a thought. I don't know.
Hey, we start that this year. Start it to tomorrow.
Incentive reservation starting tomorrow, mandatory starting in the spring or, you know, Elaine can get them, she'll whip them into shape. She'll be ready by March. The CUA guys, I, yes. Sorry, Michael.
Thank you. So I just want to talk for a minute because what precipitated this meeting was our study committee was looking at a shuttle, and we spoke last spring, I guess. And a problem with this meeting, I'm sitting here listening, is we're not dealing with real or enough information, okay? This is just a lot of opinions and feelings, okay? And you, and I mean, I'm from the business world, you can't run a business like this. You can't run a national park like this. So what I thought was going to happen, and I hope it still does, is if we could do a study for a shuttle, then we list what are all our questions, okay? Like what you said, Mayor, was an incredible idea because we've talked about it in our committee. We could get a bus running next spring, no time, but that's our opinion. Why don't we study that? Because if you put out an RFP as the National Park Service and say, "Is there anyone out there who could run a shuttle next spring? Let's see what comes back." It could be someone like Rory, it could be the company that runs Zion and the company that runs Rocky Mountain National Park. I mean, I think we need to get all these questions down, and then we have UDOT here willing to help us and really do a study.
Isn't that what we're proposing, is to...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to bring it up because, like I have, like you said, the study's too expensive. So we throw around too expensive. I'm just curious, like what, 10 mil, no, no, the shuttle. So you threw out $10 million. What kind of shuttle costs $10 million? Like what is that?
It's a shuttle sufficient to, to carry every person who wants to visit Arches National Park into Arches from some point near the entrance and takes them out with reasonable headways to, and, and comes back to pick them up, you know, just a typical shuttle system.
But do you own those buses?
No. We would contract them out.
You would not own the fleet in that scenario?
That's correct.
Okay, would you own the depot?
No, we would contract that out.
Okay. Because see, if these are really, and I bring it up because these are really interesting questions. At Zion, and you said Zion wasn't successful, it's, it's been going 19 years.
Yeah, and it, and it started out wonderful, now it is so jam-packed that it doesn't, it doesn't work as well anymore, and they're looking at alternatives.
Yeah, I mean, I was down there, and they have a beautiful system, and they're going to go to electric in their next fleet, is what they told me. But, um, you know, we can look at all these things. They actually own their fleet. Rocky Mountain leases their fleet from another company, so there's all these really good options. So all I really wanted to say is, I think a shuttle is viable if we're all onboard, and if, if we as a community can deliver the passengers to the visitor's center, then you can take them into the park. I mean, to me, that would seem like a great solution.
So can I make a closing comment here?
I like closing.
I agree with you, Michael, and those are all good points. And I think, you know, what I'm saying is, is that that planning and those ideas and discussions about what the next phase of park experience is going to be, they need to happen, but on an enhanced timeline and interim basis. In my experience, I don't see us getting something like that up and running in the next two years. Certainly not with the monies that we've already awarded to the city of Moab and Utah. So it's not a matter of the ideas that are being presented from your committee are bad or that the park service hit a home run, you know, with their proposals so far, but we need to break it up into a short-term and a long-term. And my opinion is, is they're not mutually exclusive. I'm not one of the red button Armageddon if we shift into some form of timed entry. I'm not one of those people. Every year we've had this discussion, we've had another year of data, and the trends continue to go up. And, you know, it always takes some time. Change is tough, but when you get people crossed over into a better system, whatever that is, both short-term and long-term, then we can keep moving forward. But we're definitely at capacity for how we're operating now, and that's not good for business now. So, you know, for me, please hear that I'm encouraging, you know, all of the ideas to move forward, but there needs to be some structure because, you know, we, I think we're making some progress. I mean, this is the most substantive discussion we've had on the issue yet, and I've been a part of it, the city and county, because we're not screaming at each other over who's got it figured out better. But we need to commit to that structure in the city and the county. We can keep, keep working on this, and I appreciate your comments, Caitlin. I, you know, I plan to move pretty quick on what I think would be my contributions to an interim plan, and, and, you know, possibly quicker than two months, so that we can, you know, we can get that moving forward. But I appreciate everybody's comments on this. I'm going to continue working with Kate, and everyone knows how to get ahold of me. I encourage you to communicate with Kate and myself on it. Let's just, let's try to get an interim plan that we feel good about rolled out soon. We'll learn.
I like it.
Could I just make one closing comment?
Yes.
Cool. So, you know, we're, no, but I want to want to, thanks. I mean, we're getting mixed messages because I've been in touch with Denver, and I've been in touch with Washington, and I got a letter last week from Kate Hammond, who's the acting interim regional director, so that's your boss. And she says, right here, "As you may be aware, the National Park Service has no plans to implement a reservation plan for vehicle entrance to the park at this time." So I mean, they're not looking at that now. So I mean, it's an idea, but that's not where Denver is at this point.
But we'll leave Denver to Denver.
Well, is, don't you report to them?
Yeah, basically, because of controversy about the plan, we've stepped back, put it on, put it on a slow walk, and are relooking at some of the things like a second entrance and doing things like that. But I think that we remain with a problem to solve and with a suite of solutions to choose from.
Cool. Well, as far as the small part, which is the shuttle, I'd love to work with you more on that. That's the part I'm interested in. Thank you.
Yes, and you have been for some time.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
So I've got a quick question.
Yes, please.
Regarding the, the funding for a study, if you want me to explain what that is or how it operates, or provide that information to the council in the email or letter, or how would you like to have it received that, because there are, you know, there are some requirements for the funding and...
Yeah, give us the short answer on how to get started, and then you can send us the fine print.
I really appreciate the comment about needing to understand, because we very much believe that we need to understand all the costs associated with the planning, design, the acquisition of assets, operating costs, O and M, all of that. So the funding that would be available is, is called 5304, which are transit funds. They're used for planning and feasibility studies. It's a federal match of 80/20, meaning that 80% of the cost would be federal funds, and the locals, whether it's the city or the county, would need to apply for the grant. Letter and an outline of what the study is to accomplish would need to be submitted, looking at between a $50,000 and $70,000 cost for that, of which I said 80% would be federal funds, and the rest would be, need to be matched. An RQ then would have to be advertised via our system or the degree... An RQ then would have to be advertised via our system or the degree of the consultant to complete the study. And so then there's a difference, we've heard talk about a shuttle and I imagine most folks in the room understand the difference between shuttle and transit, but do you want me to explain what that is real quick?
Please.
Okay. A shuttle is, like in Zion's, is operated by the contractor to provide transportation services to the park primarily for tourists. Transit on the other hand is primarily intended for a local customer base that runs a timed cyclical route that is year-round and is paid via transit funds. Transit funds cannot be used to operate a shuttle for tourism purposes, that's a separate system. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the difference between those two. But we can do an evaluation of the study to see what type of system it worked.
We could have a transit system along Main Street that served a shuttle system in the park?
Yes, you can run a transit system and a shuttle system to the same organization, but the shuttle system operations need to be tracked separately and paid for separately because it is a non-qualification for federal transit authority funding. So absolutely could be in unison, but financially separate.
Sure.
I just wanted to give that quick summary of what, you know, some of those requirements are.
I just want to add, the way I would like it would work in our committee when we looked at it, if you had a shuttle on Main Street running once every hour all year long, that, that allows...
That's transit.
That's transit. But then if during the season you supplement it, so now it's running every 15 minutes, those other three routes would be the tourism ones that are defined as shuttle versus transit. So that's how it would work.
Or if it went out to the park.
Yeah, if it went to the park, yeah.
So, and if you, if you'd like more, that's just a quick summary, if you'd like it written for, I can get our transit folks to get that documentation to you.
No, that'd be great. And is that, are those grants very competitive?
We would be able to do.
Great, awesome. Well, we appreciate that.
I've already asked that question.
Yeah, and you know, it, it is kind of a bigger piece of a whole kind of regional transportation, you know, and we've been putting a lot of work in on possibly bringing rail to the area, our airports expanding, our counties around us are growing, people are kind of really broadening the scope of where we're looking and how to move people. And so I think it's, it would be very beneficial to have a study done and it was just kind of up to us now to figure out what all the scope of that would be and to get that out for a bit, so.
Could you just forward, tell the information to the support? Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Do you have any other observations or thoughts from, on our...
You mentioned, you know, the rail and others, so most people who are probably familiar with the fact that we have Southeastern Utah kind of transportation group that's being formed currently. And I've been asked whether or not I thought that that, that should be included in the contract for doing that and I, and I'm of the opinion that it should be. That oversight committee or oversight group should have kind of under an umbrella, kind of an overview of these different studies that are ongoing, but not be doing them specifically. It would be more of a subcategory for that, so what we're, we're looking at and the scope of work has been distributed a little bit by Jeff Sanders, who's our planning director for the region, and we are anticipating, you know, hopefully moving forward to that soon. But having, setting it up with kind of an executive level and a technical level, so the technical folks will be more involved in, in really these various studies along with the consultants and reporting out to the executive group and that is all in the works that we've built together. So various studies, the rail, transit study could be, all be done under the auspices of oversight of the Southeast Regional Planning and Temper.
Great, I like it.
I could just flow in.
Speaking of regional planning, um, great, any other thoughts on discussion item A before moving on? Yes?
Is that allowed? I don't know what's allowed here in the...
If you give it brief.
Okay, I will be very brief. So majority of the businesses obviously are heavily invested in what's, what's happening and what's going on and what this county and city decide and the decisions, even if it's short term of one year to three years to four years, could put someone out of a job, I'm just speaking to myself, because the reason that my company moved me here is so that I can have, show results. And so upon having this discussion with my company, they said, "Well, if there's, if there's negative results, you're going somewhere else because we want to put you in a growing place." So the only thing I would ask and plead, and it sounds like we have a lot of things already in place, but just that you would remember that there are folks who very much want to live here, whose families and communities depend on the decision that we're making now that could have pre-lasting impact, whether it be positive or negative, and is speaking to a lot of business community, that's really, it's felt, now there are many there for, and there are many that are against what, what you're talking about here, but I guess that's the biggest thing. You've heard from me, I've, I've spoken with both councils, the big thing, I guess, would just be to, just keep that in mind and think about that in the future decisions, if you would.
Yeah, of course, and I think, um, there are lots of people that are concerned with congestion, not just in the park, but at the grocery store and other places. So I, I'm, I think Arches is kind of full of themselves to think that they're bringing people to town.
We don't think that.
I think people are coming to Moab because they want to be in Moab and they want to ride bikes and they want to climb rocks and they want to do lots of fun things and while they're here, they might as well go to Arches. And that's my thing, is none of these things in this study compared like who was coming to Moab regardless of Arches, because there are plenty of visitors that come to Moab and never step foot in the national parks, so.
Sure, I'm just, I would love to take Kate up on the idea of us getting together with the other agencies because if there's an effect on Arches, it's going to hit BLM, it's going to hit King Ulands and Dead Horse and, and we've already gotten dozens and dozens of letters from residents, so, I mean, we, I mean, we just said it, we have a congestion issue, we really need to have a discussion on what we're doing interim and long term. So, thank you. I had a station.
Good, okay. Uh, great, thank you all for participating. You're more than welcome to stick around for our update on the ongoing land use code amendment process to address the city and the county moratoriums prohibiting new land use applications or permits for overnight accommodations. And is everybody able to power through? Do we need a quick intermission? Zachariah, you want to lead us through this?
Sure.
Yeah, that's how we roll. We've been in here since 11:00 in the morning, yeah.
I'm here, I don't know. No, but you have a meeting tonight, yes?
Someone's working.
So are you getting paid?
Oh, yes, I'm just kidding.
If you had any need for me to stay, I'd like to...
Um, Zachariah, would there be a benefit of having our Region 4 representatives stick around?
Uh, I thought I was...
It might be interesting for you.
I think you would benefit from having the context of this conversation especially.
Thanks.
If you have read the moratorium.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
We're not going to lie to you on that side.
Can we take, can we take a break?
I don't think so.
If, if other planning commission members would like to sit at the table, you're more than welcome.
Well, I'm going to, I think I'm going to have to leave early. I don't really have a, I don't have a...
Okay, so I want to let everyone know that we have Mark Classic of Landmark Design on the phone, that he is on the screen as well. He's not going to be able to see you, I'm going to view Mark.
It's like an eagle.
Mark, just to let you know, we are starting now.
What is that animal? Frog?
Leave him up in the corner.
Totally a metaphor, isn't it?
Okay, so most of you are aware that the city and the county are currently under moratoria prohibiting new lodging developments from being, well, applications from being submitted, reviewed or approved. And those moratoria were put in place in early February and city and county staff with the assistance of Landmark Design and members of the public have been working through potential changes to the cities and counties' planning documents and land use codes. And so before we get too hooked into what's going on on the screen, I'll just give everyone a quick recap of what we've done so far in terms of public outreach. There is a website where members of the public can follow along, it's www moab area landuse.com. There are multiple materials on that website for folks who are trying to get caught up to speed. In the packet for today's meeting, you'll also see a document that looks like this. This is an agenda summary for this meeting item and it's got a running log of all the public meetings. There may be a few city meetings that are not captured in here, but it's in reverse chronological order, so if you missed, you know, if you were really engaged in March, but you missed a couple of meetings in April, you don't have to go all the way back, you don't have to read through everything to get caught up, you know, it should be easy to kind of pick up where you left off. So we held meetings for the public on March 26th and 27th to just basically do a public scoping meeting and get general feedback on what was going on in the lodging sector. There was an advisory committee meeting after that. Staff at Landmark continued to work together with planning commissions and councils to start to put together some initial policy packages, a spectrum of these policy packages from one through five, basically ranging from status quo to, you know, severely limiting or entirely limiting all new overnight lodging developments and a few in between. Those were presented on April 30th in a public workshop. There was a general presentation and then breakout groups where folks worked through the different options. Their summary notes from that are on the website and I think should have been distributed to you all by now directly. The next morning, the advisory committee met, that's comprised of city, county, planning commissioners, council members, citizens, members of the public, and here we are today. And the goal of today's meeting is basically to get clear on what the city and county councils want to see in the first draft ordinance that Landmark Design works on. So that's where we can turn to the screen and I think that these nine ideas here sort of capture what the advisory committee would like to recommend to the city and county councils as far as directing Landmark to start drafting ordinances. And the reason why it's really important that Landmark and staff get clarity today is because we can't, we don't have time to write 10 different draft ordinances or even five different draft ordinances. Ordinance writing takes a substantial amount of time and we don't have that much time left to work on the drafting and then also send these through our public hearing processes. As you know, in those public hearing processes for adoption, there is an opportunity to massage them further, but we want to try to get off on the right foot as we move into that process. So these final direction points, without going through them, feed into what Landmark is proposing as kind of the first draft and, and, and this is presented in both mapping and kind of text format. So, Mark, if it's okay, I'll run through this because it's, it's up on the screen and then if I miss anything, do you want to jump in? And I'm, I gotta unmute you, hold on. Okay, you're now unmuted, Mark. But you gotta turn off your, you have to turn off your speaker, you have to turn off your, your, you have to turn off your speakers.
That's what it sounds like. That's very good.
Curtis, are you backing up? Uh, we can alternatively try to just call you directly outside of Zoom. Would you, can, well, we can do that from the phone. If I give it to you, can I? Okay, so let's go, let's go through the map and I want to just be certain and that everyone knows this is not coming out of thin air, okay? If you've been following along, you should see much of the public sentiment reflected in this map, much of the deliberations of the advisory committee and frankly, from my perspective, both planning commissions and councils reflected in this map. And it's a starting point, don't get too attached to this, it's a starting point. But basically, the proposal at this stage, I believe, is, is that throughout all zone districts in Grand County, overnight lodging would be removed as a principal use, meaning a by right use.
So Zachariah, quick, easy clarification, please. When you say overnight accommodations, in city terminology anyway, we have terms like lodging, lodging under 10 units, B&Bs, RVs, what, what you speaking of? All of the above or part?
As currently drafted, all of the above. Again, don't get too attached to this conception, but this is what is coming to you today, okay? And again, it's based on feedback provided at both meetings, consultation with the planning commissioners and council members and the advisory committee. Doesn't mean that there's perfect consensus with all of those groups, but generally speaking, representative of probably the majority position, okay? At least in straw poll votes, if you will. And that's a point of discussion going forward perhaps. So following that change, an overlay could be adopted in this northern corridor, so roughly speaking from, say, the Maverick on the north end of town out to the Colorado River or perhaps just on the other side of the Colorado River. And in that overlay, the city council, because this is all within city limits, would have the ability to create additional standards such that if a legislative decision were made to apply the overlay to a specific parcel, then an owner or developer would be able to develop, you know, a certain set of overnight lodging developments under these different standards. And to date, there is a desire, a stated desire to see those standards include size or scale standards, form-based standards, even though it's likely that those would need to be worked through and adopted after the moratorium expires in the city, and performance standards related to energy efficiency and water efficiency, okay? There is a desire to protect the overnight lodging uses that are in existence, I think really throughout the county and including the city. But, but clearly there's a desire to severely, or just to restrict, you know, any new development of overnight lodging outside of that northern corridor. any new development of overnight lodging outside of that northern corridor. And so, you know, I have heard mixed opinions about the southern corridor in terms of allowing some types of accommodations, but generally, the sentiment, at least for a period of time, seems to be, you know, let's extend this pause button as long as we can, or until there is clear evidence that, you know, Moab and Grand County's public infrastructure and services have caught up to the demands placed on them by our current levels of visitation and overnight lodging. Obviously, this should be no surprise to many of you, but you can see it reflected in many of the public comments, both in the public meetings and in the focus groups that I have facilitated. But one of the, or a few of the key public systems that are referenced as far as needing catch-up are housing, workforce housing, infrastructure, and in particular, roads and traffic, public services, you know, some of the core services like law enforcement, fire, and then, you know, addressing some impacts like noise. Water continually surfaces as a natural limit to growth. There are some uncertainties around that, but there is definitely a large percentage of the population here that appears to be supportive of, frankly, seeing, viewing that in our codes as a limit to growth. Mark, you're now, you should be on the phone line. Can you just give us kind of a test? Yes, do you hear me? Okay, we hear you. Do you want to add anything?
Mike, do you want to come and sit closer?
I can hear you fine. I'm good, thank you.
Can you turn on the camera you're in? Sure. So that you can see the council members?
Shall we all wave? Hold on. And.
Here we go.
Hi. It's a full house.
Can you see? Yeah, okay. Can you see me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think you did a great job capturing it. And again, this call is sort of inter-ent, inter-entused. We started with the workshop group, met with the advisory committee, and had a lot of discussion, and it kind of got, this was our first take on what we've heard. And then we can go into, you know, whatever direction it's going to take us, but we need to have some sort of clarity early in Zoom, so we can start drafting that special ordinance. And I know you said most of that, but I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate that last part. We can start drafting now, but we don't want to go in a new direction. We just don't have time.
So Zachary, if I may, you may want to defer this question, but my question's concerned. The overlay, precisely how it's created, when it has to be created, when the standards for it have to be created, and most importantly, when a applicant comes along later on, how are quote-unquote legislative decisions made about whether his application is legal or not? I mean, because Kayla and I went round and round about whether it's arbitrary discretion, arbitrary discretion on our part, or they behave, standards behave more like conditional uses that are difficult to reject.
So good question. I'll try to, I'll repeat what I interpreted and make sure that I'm clear on that. So the question is, how do overlays work? How much legislative discretion do you actually have at different points within the overlay process? And when do various elements of it need to be established? And I would also invite Nora Shepherd to join into this conversation as the city's planning director. If you haven't met Nora, I encourage you to do so. So this is basically the same concept as the high-density housing overlay in the county. You can look at it more like a zone change than a conditional use. It's definitely not a conditional use. Okay? So get that language and thought process, I think, out of the way, right off the bat. So overlays, like zone changes, it's kind of a two-step process. So if the city were to adopt an overlay in that area, or frankly, anywhere else, an applicant or an owner would come to you and say, I'd like for this overlay to be attached to my particular parcel and within the bounds of where you say it could be applied. The city planning commission reviews the request. They make a recommendation to the city council. The city council meets the minimum threshold of reasonably debating the issues. That's the only litmus test for a legislative decision, and then you make a decision legislatively. You have wide discretion in terms of whether you apply or do not apply the overlay to a particular parcel. However, once you do apply the overlay, that's where you want to have standards in place that will govern the development that occurs on that particular parcel where the overlay is applied. So that's where we start talking about the, you know, size requirements and performance requirements for water or energy efficiency. I will note that, I think I've heard that there is a desire to apply those two performance standards to new development writ large and not just hotels, and, you know, things like form-based standards. So to the degree possible, you want to establish those standards now on the front end, because once the overlay concept is established, you may have people coming to you, and unless you have standards that you feel comfortable with, you're going to have a hard time feeling comfortable saying yes to an overlay request. But again, you don't have to say yes to an individual request, even if you do have those standards in place. Do you, anybody want to add to that?
Are we stuck with this overlay mapping as it is right now?
No. No. So these are, I mean, I think that there is some understanding that these boundaries, overlay, proposed kind of overlay boundaries or planning areas could use some massaging. There has been some interest in having an overlay for some, you know, particular developments or zone districts right now, such as like the C2.
I would just say all existing developments are primarily in.
Yeah. So that, I think, you know, is again, one of these points of consideration that, that can be, you know, further clarified through the process. But generally speaking, you know, again, looking for high-level, clear direction for Landmark.
You've got identified on this map a node that does not currently allow for overnight accommodation. It's the 4th East node area. Why is that being mapped?
So do you want to just go up and point it out?
You just had it.
I know, I just want to zoom in.
Right here.
So that is, okay, so if you look up at the legend.
I don't think anyone was looking at overnight.
Right. So I want to be clear on what this, what this idea is here.
This is in response, um, to your community gathering places or nodes?
Yeah, yeah, but that's not a, not open for overnight.
So in the planning areas, you see, you know, it's broken down roughly.
I love that.
And in the pink hatchmarked area, as you showed on 4th East, there is an identified potential community node. Okay? So the idea here is that we received feedback that community members are interested in exploring the potential for like neighborhood-scale mixed-use development. So there might be a combination of a cafe, or a convenience store, or office space, or medical services, or a daycare, and some housing. And maybe if it made sense, as we look at these further, to have, you know, some small-scale overnight lodging, maybe these can all fit together. And so throughout the valley, there are various places where community nodes have been called out as having potential for this mixed-use development style. But it's going to take a while to work through the policies and the design guidelines, and frankly, like just the small area plans that will govern development in those areas. And they may be different for each community node. So I don't think staff or Landmark are proposing that we try to address those before the moratorium expires, but they are called out as being follow-up planning processes. So like smaller, so it's kind of like what you're doing with your downtown plan. There would be small-area plans developed for these different community nodes.
So, excuse me, Zachary. So the default from, out of the steering committee is to make all of the city's RC zone on the north side completely, the overlay extends over that entire area for now?
It's like it's in the RC zone. Comes down the C2, C3, by the school, too.
This overlay area?
Yeah. No, the red part, does it not?
See that?
That, that, it's not just the RC zone currently. It's more than that?
I don't think so.
I believe it is more. I don't, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with the zoning, but yeah, I believe it extends beyond.
Close to C2, C3.
If, if you're correct that-
Again, these boundaries can be adjusted. It's just saying, generally speaking, the northern corridor is the place where, you know, if new lodging, overnight lodging was to be allowed, that's where it would best be suited.
Okay, so let me see, let me regurgitate this back to you, make sure I got it straight. Before the moratorium expires, we have to amend city code to A specify each and every overlay distinctly, whether, for example, one in the RC zone that might encompass the entire zone. We would have to establish any standards that would apply to that zone. And then, having incorporated that into code in the moratorium expires, any applicant who has property in that zone would come to us with a proposal that his, his development satisfies the litmus test, as you put it, of standards. And they would expect ethically or legally that we, let's just suppose the council was really cantankerous, and for whatever the reason said, well gee, Mr. Jones, that's a nice, that's a nice thing, and yeah, kind of looks like you do the standards, but you know, we're just not really in the mood today. And say, no, we can or cannot do that?
Mike, you're caught up on this idea that you're creating standards for the overlay zone in order to grant it or not grant it. That's not what it is. You have to look at it like it's a rezone. It's a legislative decision based on the best, best interests of the community, laying out safety, health, all of that. It's more of an open-ended analysis and not a checklist that if they check the boxes, they get it. It's literally no different right now than if someone came in and said, I'm in a C1 and I want to be in a C2.
Now, you can certainly establish criteria that you expect the city council to work through in its evaluation of that request. But again, it's not a checklist. It's just a guide. So you could say, you know, well, I don't want to go into that too deeply, but...
But you were, you were on to it up until that point, process of what we have to do.
Okay. But I still don't understand. Forgive me, all right? Because we've been talking about standards like size, scale, form-based, energy efficiency, and all those kind of good things. What I thought we were trying to say is in the RC zone, hey, maybe we'll allow a hotel there inside that zone if it offers a right-size, scale, form-based, and da-da-da, whatever standards we may wish to exist. That's not the same thing as creating a news, a new use or a new zone.
You're conflating stents. So right now, you would have it as Zone 8 with an overlay zone. Once the, they'd have to come and get that overlay zone attached to your parcel. That's the rezone step. Once they did that, then all of those standards would kick in, but not before.
When is the attachment done? Before or after the moratorium?
So you, during the moratorium, we're going to rezone, you'd have to rezone that area, and you would have to do an overlay zone as a part of that adoption. So there's both sitting there. So coming out of that, that district would be Zone 8 with the overlay zone hovering. Moratorium ends, they then can come forward and say, I want to take the hovering zone, the overlay zone, and I want to attach it to my parcel that's in Zone 8. You would have the option as a legislative body to do that completely as a legislative decision. If you then did that and adopted and applied it to that parcel, then those standards would kick in. That's all post-moratorium.
So meaning, right now, it's resort, let's just say it's in resort commercial. Okay? Right now, lodging development, I believe, is a use by right. It's a principal use. Meaning if somebody meets the standards of your resort commercial zone, all they need to do is submit their application, prove that they meet the standards, and you don't have the ability to deny them their development right?
Correct.
You're basically taking out that principal use from the RC zone district and saying, you need to come ask for our approval to develop lodging. We'll either grant you approval or we won't. If you have the approval, these are the standards you meet. You submit your application. You meet those standards, you get.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought it was. All right.
So then you're with us.
Yeah, although we have a different way of stating it. We'll talk to you later on. Thank you.
I'm not running the meeting, but. Let us hammer through some of this, and then we'll have a, oh, I apologize. I was unfamiliar with the.
You were invited, though, if you'd like to join.
I just want to, so when you're talking about the overlay, you say new development a lot. How does this apply to existing developments where, say, people are investing into a second home that think they're going to get a business license?
So the city and the county would have to determine how they want to deal with those uses. So let's, let's, let's take a unit in, on Williams Way or in Ridge Village, okay? Either of those, let's say, and same thing. Overnight rentals would be taken out of those zone districts where those places are used, are existing as principal uses. Okay? So they would be subject to that two-step process that we just described. So technically, those uses would become legal non-conforming uses, meaning they can continue in perpetuity as long as they were established legally prior to this zoning change and are never abandoned, meaning, at least in the county, its abandonment is stopping the use for six months or longer. As long as that didn't happen, then those uses could continue in perpetuity. I don't want to get too sidetracked, but the city and the county certainly do have the ability to amortize out those uses if they really want to go that far in not just limiting new development of overnight lodging, but actually reducing what we have currently. I don't know that that's on the table or anybody's proposing that. I just want to give you kind of the landscape of legal non-conforming uses.
I understand. I think it's important to articulate the effects of all this and the elements.
So it only affects existing in the sense that somebody would have to basically commit to doing overnight lodging now and continue that use, even if it changes ownership in order to retain that right. So that's the key.
Is someone able to apply for the business license during the moratorium?
No.
No.
No, so Becky, you're making a really good point, that if somebody has purchased property but doesn't, has not vested it as in nightly rental, then they are in jeopardy of losing the opportunity.
However, in the county, we have been in these established areas that are like, you know, known overnight lodging developments. So in the county, Ridge Village, Red Cliffs Condos, Tierra del Sol, West of El Sol. In the county, I'm not going to speak for the city, but in the county, we have continued because people, we understand that people buying into those developments are buying into essentially, you know, fully developed overnight rental developments and have that expectation. So I don't know how you've been dealing with it in the city, but it certainly would need to be clarified.
David?
It hasn't really come up during the moratorium.
There's not really a lot of new developments in the city.
Well, so like, for instance, you've got Entrada in the city. Perhaps somebody bought a unit in that development, but they hadn't converted it into an overnight rental unit. So they don't have the business license. They don't have the established use of the overnight rental. If they had come to the city asking for that right, that's, you know, that's what we're getting at. So in the county, we said yes, but, you know, in the city, it So in the county, we said yes, but, you know, in the city, it sounds like you haven't had to deal with that at least.
Zachary, another option would be those areas that are already developed and being used and that could be zoned, a use, a permitted use in those tight zones around those areas.
Is it a whole development?
Yeah, that would be up to the city and the county. Yeah, so you could.
To just legitimize developments and then, and then move on?
Yeah, so you could basically draw an overlay around that development and attach the overlay to those parcels right off the bat. And then there would be no concern.
So maybe that's a pull-out a map and some markers and mark it up as a, as a, as a suggestion.
I think it would really well if her letter, you know, that C2 thing. I think it would wildly destabilize our real estate market if you start, you know, all these people are buying homes and then all of a sudden they can't do anything they're going to do. So just something.
Something for the city and county councils to consider. You know, I don't think you need to make a final decision today, but you should give staff and landmarks some sense of whether you want to explore that as we move forward.
Well, let me, let me offer my opinion real quickly, if I would. Just off the top of my head, real estate folks, if some, in C2, for example, if you already own a townhome, for example, and it's been used, it is being used, a business license current for overnight rentals and so forth, and this moratorium takes effect, and then the property is sold subsequently with the intent of maintaining that use as an overnight rental, and, and the seller and the buyer wants to communicate that to the buyer, and for some reason it doesn't get across, okay? I mean, I would give them, I mean, we're not trying to make things difficult for people. What we're trying to do is, in the long run down the road, create some more different uses for stuff that's now overnight rentals. But I wouldn't want to, speaking for myself, I wouldn't want to push hardships, as it were, on people just because, in other words, if it didn't get across, you, it would be, I don't, maybe it's too strong to say our onus, but I think we could, wherever possible, make it clear to the buyer and seller that as long as they keep that license renewed, they're good.
So my point is, people that don't have license and then this overlay happens, then they have to go apply to get a license, and they nearly not get it.
That's correct.
At some point inside.
That's right. That, that much we'd have to talk about.
So I, I want to just turn, we only have about 20 minutes before the regularly scheduled county council meeting starts, and I'll let the chair determine whether you are okay running past four or not. But in the case that you're not okay with it extending past four, I want to just kind of get us focused for the last 20 minutes on some of the key, key, key questions so that Landmark can go forth with their ordinance writing. And Mark, feel free to jump in here, but I, I think that the most important question is for each council, and because you are going to have to adopt these ordinances separately, even though we're doing our best to try to coordinate them, are you supportive of removing new overnight lodging as a principal use or a use by right across the board? Okay, so it seems like the city council has got enough support for it.
I am, but I have a question.
Sure.
Hopefully I can get, I can do it fast. What I worry about removing a use by right is the PR nightmare that it could become. If we can remove that use by right, can we remove your right to have a cat or a dog or grow Jerusalem artichokes or?
Yes, you do have that legislative discretion, but I don't think that you need to get too bogged down in the full range of what your legislative powers are.
I know we, I know we have that power, but I want to make it clear that that is, that's not a road that we want to go down and remove every use by right.
I think what we need to do right now, though, is Zachary, I'll let you just get the big picture, 30,000-foot view, and then we'll work with you guys to go into those areas and say, this is an area where.
Good enough.
These areas, these use by rights have historically been, we need to address these.
That's what we are.
Yep. Yeah, so right now, I think we just need to focus on overarching plan, what's the goal, and then where do we need to hone in and focus to protect use by rights?
Okay.
So, okay, I saw at least a few supportive hands for the county, so I'm going to presume that that is also the case, at least for this first draft for the county. I think for Landmark, it's important to get a sense, despite what you just said, Joel, at least maybe 15,000-foot level, that northern corridor, do you anticipate that you are going to want, even through an overlay process, new develop, new overnight lodging development there? And I want to remind everyone, we're not talking about other commercial uses, right? So unless you decided to pull out or add other commercial uses in there, those are going to stay as they are. Okay? So it doesn't mean that no new development writ large can occur. We're only talking about overnight lodging here.
And so remind me how this affects redevelopment, like if an old campground out there got bought up.
That would need to be addressed in this overlay.
Turned into a three-story.
Yeah, that would need to be addressed either in the overlay or in general, how redevelopment could occur.
One of my concerns is forcing that in, that if there's a, a big panic that it's not allowed anywhere else in this area, that suddenly there'll be a rush on buying and building property in that corridor there.
Well, so there's, there, we have as a council, like conversations about like having conditions attached, so further conditions that I don't, I don't want to speak to.
Zachary already mentioned, like forms that will be expanded.
Yeah, but like strict performance standards, mixed-use daycares, you know, other, other stuff mixed into it so that it, and then that's still a place where the city is still saying yes. So if we had to pick one place.
Or have the ability to say yes.
If we had one place where we wanted to continue the ability to say yes, I think we all agree that that would be the zone, right?
That's my feeling, although I think based on the overwhelming sentiment that I've been getting in favor of option five, it's going to be, you have to make your own decision. But I'm only considering.
And I, I think it's a little difficult for us because I have no idea what is, I mean, we're looking at, when you do the drive-by, there's empty lots, so you think, oh, gosh, this could all be, this could all be developed. And as far as I know, because I've heard numbers from 900 to 1,200 new rooms, where are they? Like, I don't see what has already been bought and invested and, I mean, so to not have a real clear picture is what actually is still available.
So I, I think what you're asking is like, where are the vested projects? Where are the projects that have been approved but are not yet built?
Yes.
And that's something we could get from Nora.
So in the county.
A map, a map vested.
And I believe we have that. Mark, are you on the line? Do we, I don't know if we have it in this packet, but.
Yeah, we, we have it. I think we have it. We probably want to work with Nora or whoever's verifying what we have there.
In this packet, we have it?
Well, since they wanted a clear understanding of what's invested and also taking a feed, they wanted information about how many units have been approved already.
Color to answer.
So, I mean, I can tell you what they are in the county if people are interested, and I think we can pretty quickly rattle off at least the vested hotels within the city. But in the county, we're talking about the remaining buildout of Red Cliffs Condos, Sage Creek, which is a 108-unit development on the highway, a buildout of Rim Vista, Rim Village, that's about another 50 units. For Red Cliffs, that was a 12-unit addition onto what's already there. Wyndham Wingate Hotel, which is next to the old, the old Geezer, that's a 120-room hotel. There is an RV park out at the Gemini Bridges Road, that's 60 sites. Can Creek Campground, there's a vested campground of 32 new RV sites. There is a hotel site plan application that vested before the moratorium, 82 rooms where Dowd Flats RV Park is, not replacing the RV Park, but next to it. There's a Radisson Hotel at the former Knutson's property that vested, that's 100 rooms.
Where's that? I'm sorry, I don't know where that Knutson's is.
It's on the.
Kind of by Standard, I'll make it.
Kind of just north of, of Sage or Holyoke Boulevard. Yeah, next to that.
No relation.
And then a 35 RV site campground in Thompson Springs. So that's just in the unincorporated county, within city limits. You know, the hoodoo is under construction. You've got the, you've got the timeshare development that's under construction on the highway. You've got the hotel next to City Market, right, where Gearheads is, that vested. Let's see.
And so specific to the north corridor, what else is vested, other than what is currently under construction?
I didn't consider I put it every day.
Is that the one that's under construction?
No, that's the window.
So one more on the north corridor.
Where is that in association with?
1431 North Avenue.
And Atomic.
Is that the Slipper Camp?
North of Atomic.
North of Atomic, approximately.
So, I mean, that may not be 100% of them, but that's a pretty good accounting of what's vested, but not yet built.
Are you concerned Lions Back is not included?
That is vested. Yeah, Lions Back and.
So and Lions Back, does that?
Those are vested.
Are those, that included, is, are those numbers included in the 1,200? What is the real number?
Oh, Lions Back?
Lions Back, how many more units would that be? That was not included in the roughly 1,200.
So these are all the best ones.
That will be coming regardless of what you do.
Zachary and Mr. Mark.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if something, just to make it clear, that we maybe made a separate map and to the benefit of our ability, maybe reach together with you and Nora and have a little session and create a map that goes all of those sites that we know about and the number of rooms that each of them have been approved for and have made their little table with their names and, and whole numbers so that there's a, as we go forward.
That would be fine, yeah.
What is available today and maybe that might help us on how far the, you know, the councils want to go with moving additional overnight accommodations.
And is it possible to go back to the original RC zone and not have this new extended version?
What do you mean?
Because it's.
Extended version. Oh, oh, yeah, you can adjust the boundaries of that overlay. Absolutely. If you don't want it to go as far south, no problem.
Well, it's, it's coming down further into, in, yeah.
She's talking about the boundaries of the overlay.
Right.
Right, so that red doesn't correspond to your current zoning boundaries, and what she's asking is can those be adjusted? Of course, absolutely.
Oh, I see. So you're saying by shortening it, that would.
Well, I would just, yeah.
It would further reduce the footprint of new approvals.
And so just for their feedback right now, where would you have it extend to?
I, I think you just want the current zones that are there now, right?
Is that, you want that specific to the city now?
I will let the city council work that out internally, and you can give Mark feedback. I think that's sufficient.
So I think one thing that would be helpful coming out of this is they need to ask us the two bodies to work on for the next month, because it's like you can work on the ordinance for the, there may be specific questions that we can work on with the planning commissions. And I've heard from some council that we need to be as engaged as possible, so giving us these tasks might, might help us.
Yeah, so for me, these are the, the key questions, other than, you know, where does the overlay go? It's that question that Becky brought up, which is how do we deal with redevelopment within overlays? Or, I mean, I think Evan also talked about that. You know, we haven't talked that much about the areas outside of Spanish Valley, but, you know, I would like at least from the county, clear direction on that. I think my sense from the planning commission is that they would like to limit any new development, and we've been getting a lot of campground applications in the node where 313 and 191 intersect. But what about Thompson Springs and Cisco? Do you want to allow new overnight lodging developments in those areas?
What about the USU? Can I just ask really quickly, just from the county council perspective, that like lodging around the USU?
I think, for me personally, I would only be interested in any kind of like multi-use out there, and I think that that's going to be an area more to focus on the other commercials, stuff that's been getting displaced from overnight rentals for so long. So I'd like to see that be physical therapists, you know, all these essential services that we're losing and, and other economic diversity, having a place where they can go and find affordable land, because as long as the overnight value is driving the real estate prices, it's going to continue to price out small local businesses.
But when you say mixed use, do you include overnight accommodations in that mixed use?
I haven't wrestled with it so much, but yeah, if there was like some upstairs accommodations and downstairs, you know, was eye doctor or something like that, like that could be palatable to me, but I'm not going to stand and fight for that, so that's.
And I want to be clear that even if you don't establish an overlay, you know, in the next two months in a particular area, say around the future USU Moab campus, it doesn't prohibit you from establishing an overlay, you know, six months from now, after you work through some of those questions about what you would want the standards to be within the overlay. So, I mean, I think it's important to sort of realize, like, if you were to just take that basic question of removing new overnight lodging developments as a principal use or a use by right from these underlying commercial zones, that buys you some more time. But it is also important to, I think, you know, work through that bound, that northern corridor boundary. So, Mark, do you, are there any other specific questions that you think each planning commission and council can work through while you and your team take a first stab at the ordinance?
Well, I, I think that, you know, the nine points of, of page three are really summarized with on the map and have sort of where we are headed. I think the first two, they've been gone over and been helpful. We haven't had any discussion about downtown, you know, sort of the idea that we have on all overnight accommodations as part of overlay, and then also confirmation that balancing downtown right now and like, we're doing no-do overnight accommodations. So it's sort of the key, key part of it.
I mean, I'm kind of the opinion that it's easier to just go option five in the county now, and then come, once we see all this development that's already been vested come to fruition and we have a better understanding of the water study and everything, then go back in and create overlays if we feel like we're lacking in overnight accommodations.
Yeah, that's an important, thank you, Evan. Because I remember asking Mark's sidekick, Jenny, at one of the meetings if overlays had to be defined now before the moratorium ended, and she said, yeah, but you've clarified that that's not the case. We just essentially go to option five without them, and then if we decide it's in the best interest of the town to create overlays and, and put some use, put some standard uses back in, then we can certainly do that at our discretion.
Correct. You are not required to establish that overlay in the northern corridor. It's just that that's, if, if, if one were to be established, that seems to be the area where there's the most agreement about approaches, but you're not required to.
And that's what I'm hearing. So that's the way it made sense to me to think about it is overlay eligible areas, and then the city actually is going to try to figure out where overlay will get applied immediately. Those are the two things that we need to figure out as a city. Basically, the northern area boundary for the overlay eligible area, and then where in the city, like Williams Way or Entrada, maybe. city, like Williams Way or Entrada, maybe, where the overlay will immediately get...
And that's true in the county as well, and we've already got that overlay established through our overnight accommodations overlay, which is attached to Questa del Sol and Coyote Run and Rim Village, so you could just extend that overlay to other existing developments that you wanted it to be attached to immediately, to establish certainty for those owners and those units in there.
I am the same frame of mind as Evan, and I would be going towards option five, not putting hiatus on, on any few hotels, but we have an idea of what, what is happening. So, if we're talking about 1,200 plus Lions Back and then potentially any property that's around the USU, which is Sibla, and they can do hotels there, I, yeah, I'd like to focus on housing.
Yes, after seeing the amount of already vested properties, I'm like, whoa, we're going to have a whole lot of accommodations if all of those come to fruition, and let's, you know, let's stop things while we let those see what happens, so we have a better idea. Because that was surprising, I mean, I've seen that before, but it really hit me to not day how, how much is already vested.
So, for starters, the PDF I was working on only had option four, so someone help me the difference between four and five, which it sounds, it sounds like the frame of mind.
We added additional option when we were...
Four is a clean number.
A lot of people removed one, so we can go back to two, three, five.
So, what you, so, but I think I hear what you're saying is that you want to remove overnight accommodations as permitted use across the board, out of the gates, more torn, and then refine overlays zones where you want to, and then apply those. Oh, I do. The previous one only had four.
That's right.
So, what would be the timeline for that? So, we're at, where we at, more than three months in?
We have basically two and a half months left.
Boy, it goes fast.
Okay, so, let me think about this. So, for the people that are vested, they would be affected by an ordinance that basically removes overnight accom, or overnight accommodations as a city use. But what about these people that are not vested that we're referring to, that are in the middle of a transaction, and they're basically in almost another moratorium of sorts, waiting for an overlay, right?
So, that's what David was saying, in the city and in the county, we would want to say, and this is a policy decision, but you would have the ability to say, okay, we're going to, in the county at least, we're going to extend our overnight accommodations overlay zone to all of the developments where we had that concern, so that those folks have certainty.
So, Williams Way, would, I mean, you...
So, in the city, the example is Williams Way or Entrada, let's say.
So, you, it's allowable?
So, you would establish certainty that...
If you've gotten your permit. Well, it sounds like there's an option to do without, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with if condos are getting built in Rim Village, I mean, people can live there, those could be houses, they don't have to be overnight accommodations.
Right, so that's a policy decision, and I think that's for each jurisdiction to work out in this certain...
The problem that I would have with that, like my concern is, is, you know, that use sets the purchase price, and I hate to see people bring investment in and then have the rug pulled out from under them and get burned, because if we have a tendency of applying this stereotype to everyone who's in nightly accommodations, that there's some rich fat cat that can afford to, you know, to lose an instantaneous 200 grand off the top of the condo that you just bought. So, it just seems like, you know, I would like a way to transition through that so that nobody that's already, you know, has money on the table gets hurt. And so, just so that I'm clear, until that overlay is, is introduced, they would be the kind of limbo.
Correct. Yeah, so I think that's one of the very clear questions that each jurisdiction needs to work through with some of these established developments where many of the units are currently used as overnight rentals, but not all of them.
What would be a timeline, you know, to, do we have a ballpark estimate of how long it would take us to implement overlays after we remove overnight accommodations from that point? Three months, six months?
Well, we already have our overlay in place, it's just be a matter of changing the back, the orders, but one of the things that I'm wondering is if we've already got landmark on the hook for this project, do we utilize them to come up with some of these other design standards and stuff that would be included in that overlay?
Yeah, I like the idea of design standards, which was included in the RFP.
Yeah, I mean, we just don't have enough time to establish those within the next two and a half months, because those are involved processes. I'll let Mark speak to how long he thinks they might take.
I think, you know, that we certainly get the guidelines of the, for an overlay, it's a very different sort of a, a mortgage code, it was, I think I didn't try to explain this animal, and it needs time to evolve to public, to a greater level, so that we can certainly provide guidelines where there will be required for, you know, for your overlay, that I don't think will be a problem. We, and you all know that we, we have to have our work done, it must be a month for you. So, you know, we need to get some direction going here, and I'm trying to understand here, are you saying that you just, the latest, what I just heard was that you don't want to have any overlays in the first round, is that right?
We're considering that.
Just, and you want to eliminate overnight accommodations as a use by right throughout the city area? And overlays will follow for, for the application of the overlays?
The application, but we still want to create the overlays that we've, that we were contracted to do.
The overlays that we were going to include in, in our ordinance, right, because it won't be to the level of the mortgage code.
I think what I heard...
Yeah, an overlay, an overlay won't be able to, probably put a different, a guideline in a overlay or another one, lots of suggestion, I said more of a guideline, and the other one is that it requires an outright, which is the mortgage code.
Mark, before we...
It requires a lot more, every time. And so, if that's the direction you want, so we can always add that on later, if it's a big time to add it, then I think where we were headed was to get the ordinance changes required through the moratorium, that was initially to be added, it's later on.
So, I think what I heard, Mark, was that outside of the city of Moab, new overnight lodging developments would be removed as a use by right or a principal use. No overlays established out of the gates, although I do think that there are some outstanding questions about places like Thompson Springs and Cisco. Within city limits, I think there are some who are okay with establishing an overlay in that northern corridor out of the gates, and some who are not. Right, right, the bound, yes, the process, right, not, not attaching now, correct.
What would be nice, though, is to have, so, for our consideration, like, like Caitlin was saying, that identified as that north corridor, and then also...
And then these existing, these existing developments.
Yeah. So, at least we have it as, as a drafted option for consideration.
What's the argument for non-instituting the overlay? I didn't quite understand that.
That's just what I heard.
Just like the boundary, taking time to get the boundary right, is that?
No, like the...
Not even setting the expectation that there's some potential, like, within legislative approval for new, new developments to be approved. Because the thing is, once you, I mean, if you do establish that overlay on parcels where there isn't, you know, currently lodging development in existence, you're setting the expectation that somebody can come to you, ask for the overlay to be applied to their parcel. So, if you don't establish that overlay, then you're not setting the expectation that somebody at least has a chance of getting it right, you know, right now.
Great, yes, very quickly, we got a whole other agenda here, so let's try to wrap it up in the next five minutes.
So, I just like to ask one question, considering that you did have to answer here, right? Yep. If we had overlays with mixed use, and it resulted in, say, a third of 1% addition to the overall overnight lodging inventory, but including that in developments, making them economically feasible, and they added other, other uses, like restaurants and office space and residential, mixed use that we want to create, would that be okay? Because, because by, by basically saying that we're putting that on full, then we kind of say we're also putting the community development potential of overnight lodging as a, as a mixed use on full as well. So, and, and some of this, I think, has to do with the capacity of landmark in our staff planning departments, just to work through these issues within the dev, I mean, the moratorium, but I also want to get as much out of them as far as like setting the stage for the steps, so, and that might mean that we work towards, like, I don't want to set the incorrect expectation with the community, but I also want to be setting the stage for work that we do post in the moratorium.
Everybody clear on what Caitlin is suggesting there?
What was your percentage, though? 1% of one-third? What was it? It's, I think, what, let me, let me try to understand, because I think what you're saying is like, if you can throw some nightly rentals into a project, they might get built. So, if you take nightly rentals out of a project, you may not get a daycare.
You may not get any...
You may not get anything. And so, does that make sense?
Right.
It's to, to make a, a project...
Well, in the city, it really, it does make sense, because if you have big development and, and you have a one-story building that has personal uses, and it wants to put another story on it, plus a third story of rental, of, of nightly rentals, and the nightly rentals maybe were paying for the addition and creating the office space and the other, the other space below.
And so, an overlay to us is worth it for consideration, and so I think, Caitlin, what you're saying is, we'd still like an overlay, please. We'd like it, we, we're talking mixed use, yes, the ratio of, of nightly to other is something to consider, we're definitely talking north corridor, we're just not sure about the rest of the city.
Yeah, I think downtown warrants a lot more discussion about scale, because there's nothing that will change the feel of the community more than allowing a lot more height, because what will happen is the highest and best use is something more than what's there now, so people are going to buy it out, tear it down, build three-story structures, the maximum they can, because the property's not valuable, and that will change dramatically how Main Street moves.
What if we could incentivize a daycare and, and other, like, office space?
Maybe some outline areas, I just, I think Main Street needs a lot of discussion.
If you change that in the city, you need to change the, the height, height restrictions first.
Okay, so, in, in an effort to wrap this up for Evan, and the rest of the county council, and everybody else who's staying for the county council meeting, Mark, I think your, your directive is clearly to remove new overnight lodging as a principal use throughout the county, this is the county, and that includes the city. The county planning commission and council may decide at a later date to reverse that for places like Thompson and Cisco, to start working on standards that would be applied within an overlay, and the city is going to work through where that overlay should be established, for the eligible overlay.
And what about the immediate?
And the, and the immediate overlays, so, so kind of four components.
Do you repeat those four components?
Okay, first, removing new overnight lodging as a principal use or a use by right. Second, the county will determine how they want to deal with Thompson Springs and Cisco in light of that. Third, to develop, to start developing standards that could be applied within an overlay, places that would be eligible for an overlay, so those would be those mixed use standards, the performance standards, that sort of thing.
Before, before you go on to number four, I was assuming that we're going to make two different standards, two different overlays, one for downtown and one for the north area, but are we going to do downtown and office?
Yes, maybe.
Is it office capable?
Uh, city council members.
I think it's going to take a lot of discussion.
Okay, so, I think the city will have to work through that.
He can draft it up, and we can say no, but I think we want to encourage the draft up, so at least we have the option for consideration.
So, we would develop, on the second one you mentioned, we develop standards for basically two overlays, one for northern town and one for downtown.
Right. And in that process, the, the city will also examine the boundaries of those eligible overlays. And then lastly, I think for both the city and the county, we want to see language that establishes certainty for some of these known overnight rental development areas. So, you heard, you know, Williams Way and Entrada within city limits, we've talked about Rim Village and Red Cliffs and some of the other areas in the county. I can work with you, and Nora can work with you, on getting a good understanding of where some of those existing places are, we'll run that by, you know, our planning commissioners and realtors and such as well, but those would be the, you know, the four guiding principles right now.
Yeah, that's, that's why, yeah, we'll, we'll need to reach out with you on that, because we have a priority about what the issues are and, or we don't have, if that sounds good.
Everybody feel good about that, sitting around the table?
Yeah. I could just add that the north corridor is the priority. I've heard north corridor in downtown is sort of in great status, and I'm hearing that there's a capacity issue, and the north corridor, I think it's a simple one, and so focus on that and see what specifics they can tell.
Motion to adjourn.
Any burning desires, anything else while we're all together? Thank you all for coming and attending and participating, appreciate you, and we will, there's a motion made by the mayor, can she get a second?
Second.
Second, am I, are you allowed to vote in the courthouse? All right, we're adjourned.